Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday night, October 11, 2021, Business Meeting. We would say thank you for joining us, to the viewing audience, and we would ask that all would stand for the presentation of colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are selected students from the Air Force JROTC programs at JM Robinson, Central Cabarrus, Northwest Cabarrus, and Mount Pleasant High Schools. And their personnel includes Cadet Major Malexi Lopez-Ortiz, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel James Hughes, Cadet First Lieutenant Lacy Wiley, and Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Austin Love. Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem are 12 members of the JM Robinson High School Band. Their personnel includes Charlene Garcia, Callie Munoz, Lily Doe, Abigail Jones, Alexis Garcia, Samaria Tidwell, Luke Hanson, Tori Hedrick, Haley Kazaya, Samir Roberts, Tyler Lawrence, and Sean Googie. The Director of the JM Robinson Band is Mr. Drew Carter. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. So for our viewing audience, the Board has reconvened from closed session. We have called the meeting to order. And with that, I would ask for a motion that the October 11, 2021 Business Meeting agenda be approved as presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next, we will begin with our recognitions with items under 6.01, and start with Impact Through Education Awards. And we would ask Mrs. Ronnie Boone, our Director of Communications and Public Information, to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, and good evening to everyone that's watching on our livestream this evening. It's my pleasure to present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff tonight at WM Irvin Elementary and Harris Road Middle Schools. We're grateful for the support and sponsorship of these awards by our partners at Equitable. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Ben Sloan and Mr. Adrian Caspar to join me at the front of the room so they can stand with our honorees tonight. It's just you?
Yeah.
So it's just Mr. Sloan with us this evening? He's standing right there on that line back there? There you go, right there. Thank you. We're so grateful to Equitable for your continued support and sponsorship of this recognition program, and we just want to know how much we appreciate that. So without any further ado, let's get started with our honorees from WM Irvin Elementary. I'd like to invite any members of the administrative team for Irvin to come forward at this time. And our first Irvin honoree this evening is Joaquin Davis. Joaquin is an achiever among the students at WM Irvin Elementary. As an IB student, he clearly demonstrates several of the school's learner profile traits. He is an enquirer in all of his classes, he likes to explore and try new things, and will lead by example in these endeavors to gain knowledge and understanding. He cares about his peers and teachers, and is respectful and helpful. While he enjoys his successes, he also encourages others who may struggle. He is a friend to all, and leaves others happy to have been with him. His smile alone can brighten your day. The Irvin Elementary staff is proud to present Joaquin with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Good job. If you're all family, come on and stand with her. Every teacher who has Addison as a student will remember her. She is a goal setter and works hard to achieve them. She strives in the school setting and is a quiet example of balance and principle. She clearly demonstrates respect and compassion to her peers and teachers, and celebrates the successes of her classmates. Whenever you look at Addison, you will be sure to find her doing the right thing, no matter what setting she is in. Irvin Elementary looks forward to watching her continue to grow as an IB leader at the school. Congratulations, Addison. Congratulations, and thank you. Just know that we have big smiles on our faces for you, okay? Big smiles. Congratulations.
Let him get a picture of you real quick with your plaque. All right.
WM Irvin, the WM Irvin staff proudly recognizes Rachel Franco as an Impact Through Education Award winner. Mrs. Franco is the upper grades EC Living and Learning teacher. Staff members describe Mrs. Franco as dedicated, passionate, and a true advocate for all the students and families that she serves. She works diligently to plan and teach her students with patience and with all of their needs in mind. WM Irvin is proud to have her as an Irvin Eagle teacher. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And our final honoree from Irvin Elementary is Samantha Weaver. Samantha Weaver is most deserving of this Impact Through Education Award. She consistently demonstrates professionalism, knowledge, organization, and has the ability to help all staff in so many capacities. Mrs. Weaver stays incredibly busy, yet always seems to have time to handle each individual request, which are many, at the exact moment it comes in. She is dependable, trustworthy, she's a dependable, trustworthy staff member, and is a valuable part of the Irvin family. Congratulations, Mrs. Weaver. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now for our honorees from Harris Road Middle, I'd like to invite Mr. Bookheart to come And our first, our first honoree from Harris Road is Eliza McCarthy. Is this Eliza? Okay. You can scoot down just a little bit for me. There you go. Thank you. Eliza is an eighth grader at Harris Road Middle School. She is described as a joy to teach, a dedicated and exceptional student who possesses the ultimate can-do attitude with positive energy and a smile. Eliza has an impressive work ethic, and her high academic achievement is a direct result of hard work and a commitment to excellence. Eliza is kind, empathetic, and considerate of her peers. She is one of the few students who notices those who may be struggling. Eliza makes it a point to be kind and to help those students when and where she can, and does so without being asked. She is a good friend to her peers. Harris Road Middle School is proud to recognize Eliza with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We all have big smiles on our faces for you. Thank you. Hey there. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Samaj Kennedy. Samaj and his family come forward. Stand right there for me. Samaj is also an eighth grader at Harris Road Middle School. He is described as funny and personable, and someone who makes the best out of every situation. He is encouraging to his friends and classmates. He sets goals and reaches them in an effort to build his proficiency both academically and athletically. He proudly represents the Harris Road Patriots team on the football field. He is a leader who is extremely driven competitively, and leads his classmates to meet their goals while they are trying to beat him in academic games. Samaj is joyful, teachers and peers are drawn to his positivity and optimism. Harris Road Middle School is a better place because Samaj is there. His school is proud to present him with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Good job.
All right, one more quick. Here you go.
Our next honoree from Harris Road is Ms. Mary Nutell. As an exceptional children teacher at Harris Road Middle School, Mary Nutell has had a tremendous impact on the success of both students and staff. As one of Ms. Nutell's colleagues put it, "I have seen Mary in action, and she has great empathy and understanding as it pertains to her students. She puts everything she has into making sure the needs of her students are met, and goes beyond just the academics." As the EC lead, Ms. Nutell generously shares resources with staff and provides guidance and suggestions to whomever needs it. Another one of her colleagues shared, "Mary's responsibilities have grown enormously over the past five years. We have worked together in inclusion classes for 10 years, and she is the best person I've ever met who works with students in small group situations. She can pinpoint things over a few classes that others may have missed over weeks in the larger classroom. Students gravitate toward her and feel comfortable asking her questions and going to her for clarification and advice. Ms. Nutell is a true teacher leader, and Harris Road Middle School is proud to recognize her as one of its Impact Through Education Award recipients." Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
One more quick. Here you go. All right, one, three, one, two, three.
And our final honoree from Harris Road Middle School this evening is Ms. Bridget Phillips. Ms. Phillips is a school nurse at Harris Road Middle School. Nurse Bridget is described as the consummate professional who has been a rock for the school community during these past two years of turmoil and uncertainty. One of her colleagues said, "Nurse Bridget stared into the face of the most dangerous time we have experienced and didn't blink." She addressed everything head-on during the initial return to school during the pandemic, and gave teachers and staff alike confidence that things would be okay. Her organization and professionalism have allowed the school to function even when things seemed impossible. Teachers at Harris Road Middle School say they could not teach without Nurse Bridget being there. Another staff member described Ms. Phillips' dedication to her job and the school as "going above and beyond the call of duty every single day." There is not a position in any school that has been more taxed, more taxed more during these troubling times than our school nurses. Nurse Bridget goes out of her way to help students and assist staff. Her directions and expectations are clear, and she is compassionate and understanding with both staff and students alike. When my family was affected by COVID last year, she was available, helpful, and ever-present with information and advice. Harris Road Middle School is proud to present Nurse Phillips with an Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for all your hard work.
One more quick. Here we go. One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Boone. Now we will move to 6.02. We will have the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we'll have Dr. Marion Bish to the podium. Good evening again.
Good evening again. So, tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce to you as the Board our Hillbush Teacher of the Month for October. And so we extend our thanks and our gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued sponsorship of this wonderful teacher recognition program. We look forward to having Mr. Vaughn join us next month for this presentation. So our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October is Gail McGee. I'd like to invite Ms. McGee, her family, and any members of her school's administrative team to come forward at this time. Thank you. Move over just a little bit. There you go. I'm learning from this thing. She trains me well. So, Mrs. McGee is an economics and personal finance teacher at Cabarrus-Canaplis Early College High School. She was nominated for this award by a student who wrote this. "Mrs. McGee works tirelessly to ensure her students are provided with the best education possible, and have fun while doing it. Constantly looking for ways to make her lessons engaging and exciting, Mrs. McGee never fails to put a smile on students' faces." In addition to her economics course, she also works with the school's seminar classes, curating more interesting lessons to encourage students to develop a variety of healthy and happy life skills to prepare us for the real world and our future careers. This student concluded her nomination saying this, "If everyone was as diligent, kind-hearted, loving, and fun to be around as Mrs. McGee, the world would be a better place. I feel so lucky to have her as a role model." Mrs. McGee, thank you for all that you do to provide your students with engaging and exciting lessons, and for setting such an excellent example for them to emulate. Congratulations on your selection as the October Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools.
Congratulations.
There we go. Perfect.
And next, we will move to 6.03. We will keep Dr. Bish for the Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year.
Thank you. It is, as always, the best night of the month when we can recognize all these people and remember the great work that's being done in all our schools. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Adam Arbuthnot and his family, if they will join us in the boardroom, please. So guys, if you'll go stand right back there, we have the whole A-team with us. We have Dr. Adam Arbuthnot, his wife Anna, and his sons Alec and Axel. So congratulations to Dr. Adam Arbuthnot, Principal of Concord High School. He has been selected as the 2021-2022 Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year. The Principal of the Year program is sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction at Wells Fargo. Superintendent Kapicki surprised Dr. Arbuthnot with the announcement of his school on Monday, September 20. Dr. Arbuthnot has been Principal of Concord High School since 2016. He previously served as Principal of Wolf Meadow Elementary. In addition to serving as principal, he began his career with Cabarrus County Schools in 2002 as a teacher at Cox Mill Elementary School. Prior to his first principalship, he served as an Assistant Principal at Weddington Hills Elementary and Cox Mill High Schools. Dr. Arbuthnot earned his bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Florida. Go Gators! He also holds an educational specialist certificate from Wingate University, along with two master's degrees from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. In addition, he received his doctorate in educational leadership from Wingate University in 2011. It is evident that Arbuthnot is dedicated to his school and community. According to Cabarrus County School Director of High Schools, Ben Alred, quote, "Anyone who's spent any time with Dr. Arbuthnot knows that he exudes the spirit of Concord High School. This includes, but is not limited to, spider-themed clothing and sneakers in school colors." What you may not know is that this Concord High School-inspired life is driven by a purpose: to see all students welcomed at a school that will help them find and transition to the next chapter of their lives. Adam knows that creating a student-centered environment is the key to unlocking students' potential. This is a driving force behind the innovation and change at Concord High School. Many of us go to work every day. Adam goes to Concord High School, a place he calls his home away from home. It is this dedication that has led to the achievement he shares with his students, staff, and community of Concord High. This is not the first time Dr. Arbuthnot has been awarded this honor. He was the 2014-15 Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year, and the 2015 Regional North Carolina Principal of the Year. Cabarrus County Schools' principals nominate among their peers, and a selection panel comprised of former Principals of the Year select the winner based upon an interview and artifact presentation. Dr. Arbuthnot will now compete with other principals across the state for North Carolina Principal of the Year. After the state selection process is completed, one principal will be selected as the 2022 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. Each Regional Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives a $1,000 cash award for his or her school, and a $1,000 cash award for personal use. The 2022 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year for the state receives $3,000 for his or her school, and $3,000 for personal use. Regional award recipients will be selected by January of 2022, and the state-level winner will be announced in the spring at a special event. Congratulations to you, Adam. We are glad and proud to have you in Cabarrus County Schools. At this time, we would like to invite Krista Eason and any family members with her to come into the boardroom, please. Good evening, Krista. If you will, right here on that back little line on the floor, if you will move over. There you go. Thank you. So we want to offer our congratulations to Krista Eason, Assistant Principal at Carle Fur Elementary School, who has been selected as the 2021-22 Assistant Principal of the Year for Cabarrus County Schools. Krista was surprised by Superintendent Kapicki at her school on Monday, September 20. She has served as an Assistant Principal at Carle Fur Elementary since 2020. Prior to Fur, she served as the Assistant Principal at Harrisburg Elementary for four years. She was also previously an instructional technology facilitator for four years, and a classroom teacher for 14. In 2016, she earned a postgraduate certification in educational leadership from Appalachian State University. She earned a master's in education in instructional technology from East Carolina University in 2014, and began her journey in education at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, earning a Bachelor of Arts in elementary education in 1998. According to Principal Darren Roberts, "We are very fortunate that Mrs. Eason joined the Fur family last year, and we are excited that she has received this much-deserved recognition. Mrs. Eason completes an endless number of duties and responsibilities each day. Regardless of the task or challenge at hand, she always maintains a positive and calm demeanor in all situations. She has a wealth of curriculum knowledge, which she routinely shares with staff. Her communication is clear..." Her communication is clear and timely. Her love for children is palpable, and she dedicates her time and energy to supporting staff, students, and families in any way she can. We are so proud of Ms. Eason, and we are privileged that she is a Fur Falcon." The Cabarrus County Schools' Assistant Principals nominate and vote among their peers for the Assistant Principal of the Year Award based on a set of criteria, and a panel comprised of former principals of the year selects the winner based upon an interview and artifact presentation. Congratulations to you, Krista, our 2021-22 Cabarrus County Schools' Assistant Principal of the Year. And also, a special thanks to our principal and assistant principal of the year sponsors, who are the Cabarrus Arts Council, Lowe's Home Improvement, and 73 in Maine for their support. Congratulations to you, Krista.
Okay, board members, we will move to approval of the October 11th, 2021 Personnel Recommendations, items under number 7.01. May I have a motion that the October 11th, 2021 Personnel Report be approved as presented in closed session?
Same.
Have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Adcox. And now, may we, let's see, let's move to 7.02. And I need a motion for the October 11th, 2021 Administrator Recommendation be approved as presented in closed session.
Same.
A motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we will move to items under number eight, approval of the minutes. Are there any noted corrections or comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for September the 13th, 2021, and September the 27th, 2021, and October the 4th, 2021?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will move to items under number nine and begin with 9.01, which are our guest speakers, and we will begin with Paul Wanish. Uh-huh. I did. So, board members, number one and number two speakers have not shown, so we will begin with number three, which is Paul Wanish. If you'll just step to the podium?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You are welcome. Thank you for joining us, and if you'll just key the mic up and make sure the red button turns on. And are you sure it's on?
It's blue.
Push, push the button there. There you go.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Your time begins now.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Superintendent, esteemed board members, my name is Paul Wanish, Concord resident and program choice driver. Growing up in Milwaukee, I also have 10 years' experience with, excuse me, for my glasses, 10 years' experience walking, biking, and using public transit. I'm here because I believe our pupils can get more from the school experience, and will share some ideas. I'll reference the slides as numbers as I whizz through these slides, not a page two. My problem statement can be viewed as pupil transportation opportunities. I'll provide suggestions to change transportation, helping families, students, and CCS alike. I focused on Cox Mill, but solutions are generalized. Opportunities are significant, as noted on the slide, not a page three. Policies/laws should always be considered the controlling forces. State General Assembly and CCS articles are the basis. Implications are that attendance through hub stops, in district, and self-driving are the policies. I don't see any mention of pedestrian traffic. Program choice is important and award-winning...
Is now exiting.
Okay. Sorry about that. Program choices are important, award-winning things, and must be, must be continued on all fronts, not a page four. Because of redistricting, students, families, and program choice are dropped from provided transportation options, even though pupils are accepted into the program. Upon reapplying, they again are pupils of the, in the same program-choice school. Three distinct ideas came up: define a hub stop within a neighborhood, or additional stops on an existing route. The only concerns raised were safety, but regular stops don't check for adults at the stops. State law only precludes children eight or less being left alone in buildings. Safety before and after buses should be the parent's responsibility. And the third idea is a soft district for program choice, one and a half miles beyond the current district boundaries. This addresses many program, was that a beat? This addresses many program-choice redistricting concerns. The program-choice application process limits the school population, keeping the number of students per school unchanged, page five. Highland Creek pedestrian access. Highland Creek winding walk...
Is now joined.
That's okay. I'm sorry. Sorry for the... Highland Creek winding walk, Sky Brook are landlocked from school systems, preventing any pedestrian routes to elementary high school. Concord Park and Recreation are completing final state site plans for Ramsier Park adjacent to both Cox Mill and Highland Creeks. A high priority phase will be a greenway across Clark Creek, opening up all developments, approximately 150 homes, to all forms of pedestrian traffic. CCS may wish to consider funding to support school access. Not a page six. Several Concord schools are missing sidewalks. Elementary schools are mostly old infrastructure, built before zoning requirements. Sidewalks instead of grass are generally considered the minimum requirement for pedestrian traffic. Six elementary schools appear to be missing sidewalks of the 15 or more. This is a school infrastructure improvement. Federal funds likely to be coming and need very little planning and time to complete. I ask you to consider these four topics with hub and one and a half mile extensions applying immediately. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Speaker number four is Elizabeth Rory.
Good evening. Good evening. Do I have three minutes or five minutes for Moms for Liberty, the group?
Your group, correct.
Yes.
You have five.
Okay. It just said over there. It said it. Okay. Thank you for this time to speak today. I will reintroduce myself to the audience that may be attending for the first time. My name is Elizabeth Rory, and my children go to Cabarrus County Schools. I am also the Chair for Moms for Liberty, which is a nonpartisan group which speaks for parents' rights in the public schools. To date, we have over 300 members in Cabarrus County since we started in July. Lastly, nationwide Moms for Liberty has over 50,000 members in 30 states, and they only started January 1st of 2021. We take this very seriously, as this is our children's education. Teachers and lawmakers must work with the parents and for the parents, as these are our children, and this is our public school, not private schools, I remind all. We appreciate and are grateful for teachers and administrators, but this needs to be, and is supposed to be, a partnership, but with parents at the helm. This is how the school system is set up. There are many issues we are concerned with, so we look forward to voicing these each month. Tonight, I would again like to address the mask. Last week's school board meeting was a COVID protocol focus group, I am of the understanding. This was not clear to us. We just knew there was a meeting. The focus group, I'm told today, consists of doctors and other professionals and does include parents. We need more specifics of this focus group tonight, addressed after public comments. This is a group of 20 people, I believe, and I want to know, after the speaking out tonight, I want to know why the focus group parents were not allowed to weigh in. It was just a gynecologist, and it was some other doctors. And I also want to know what parents are on that group, focus group, that are optional masks, if we have any that are optional masks. I would like all opinions in this focus group. I can say many of us watching were highly disappointed and astonished to be listening to the gynecologist about COVID measures. I will not be calling my gynecologist if I think I have COVID. This was a poor choice for an expert, and all the information this doctor provided did not give us an expert measure we have asked for, and we have all heard the gynecologist state that masks were not very effective. The pediatrician was somewhat helpful, but why were all the experts only for masks? Many parents have physical, emotional, and other serious incidents about the mask, which need to be presented to this focus group. It was one-sided, I must say. I would like to formally and publicly ask you to join this focus group as an optional masker, so I may speak as well at the next meeting to represent the 300-plus in our communities' members who want masks optional. We still formally request masks to be optional due to the mountains of information in the public which has been presented multiple times. The case has been made for optional mask, and we still believe this is overreached by government and school boards to mandate this protocol. Please contact me so I may join. Next, I would like to speak about the quarantine protocols. At the school board meeting on August 16th at minute 51, the ABC Collaborative Team key takeaways were: adhere to proper masking. Proper masking is the most effective mitigation strategy to prevent secondary transmission in schools when COVID-19 is circulating and vaccination is unavailable or there is insufficient uptake. And then, on the next slide at 57 minutes, the quarantine policy was documented. Let me reread this policy. Quarantine was required for individuals with close contact except for three exceptions. One was speaking to the vaccinations, two was speaking to those who had recovered from COVID, and the last one, number three, was bolded in red and underlined, and I quote, "Students who are not fully vaccinated after a close contact in a classroom or other setting, if masks were being worn appropriately and consistently by both the person with COVID-19 and the potentially exposed person, do not need to quarantine." We are wearing masks. Why are we quarantining? Let me repeat. Why are we quarantining if we're wearing masks? That was straight off the ABC protocol, and even Ms. Blackwell asked specifically to Mr. Brian Schultz, "So you're saying that if we don't, if we wear masks, we do not need to quarantine?" And he said no to the quarantining. And recently, we sent a letter from an attorney to a school board, to the school board and the superintendent. Quarantine has to come from the Health Department. It is illegal to mask or quarantine kids from any other school or body of government, such as the school board. Other counties and states have gone to court recently, as I am sure you are all aware, and the judge's rulings are in the parents' favor. The school boards are overreaching their legal jurisdiction. I want to see in this post-group discussion where the law dictates that the school board can quarantine, but this is a rhetorical question. As we all know, and we've all researched, that the quarantine measures were not given to school boards. Parents will be filing a lawsuit as soon as possible if this illegal quarantine doesn't stop. We have hundreds of parents ready to sign the affidavit. As Americans, we follow the law and ask that you do as well. Only two school board members, Mr. Fur and Ms. Blackwell, have followed the law, and I want to personally thank Mr. Walter, too, as he is demanding answers as well. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Next speaker is Stephanie Bloxham.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. All right. What is soon? Tomorrow, two weeks, a year? Well, it's October 11th, and that means that two weeks to flatten the curve is actually 575 days and counting. Soon is just a dangling carrot out in front of the horse. Soon is a moving goalpost. Soon is starting to sound a lot like somewhere we will never get. Some people back in 1776 felt that it was too soon for 56 men to put their name on a bold piece of paper called the Declaration of Independence. Was Abraham Lincoln too soon in signing the Emancipation Proclamation? Did Martin Luther King Jr. give his "I have a dream" speech too soon? Who knows? But if they had not done it then, where would we be now? If you wait for the perfect moment, it will never come. I would imagine our founding fathers are rolling over in their graves about the freedoms and liberties we have given up to our government in the name of safety. Benjamin Franklin, who today would be labeled a conspiracy theorist and a domestic terrorist, as of recently, once said, "Those who give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Three things that I got from your experts two weeks ago. Number one, they are looking forward to carrying these mandates well into 2022. There's no end in sight for this. Number two, your pap smear expert has zero pulse on what is going on inside our schools. He just wanted to talk about how much he personally loved masks. I guess the next time I will call a heart surgeon in for his opinion on an ingrown toenail. Number three, all the people that you brought in fit your narrative. You didn't even look for someone with opposing views. Thank God for Blackwell, because she asked questions. Change did not come because those 56 men waited around until they had enough support. If you think it won't work if all of us band together to tell these tyrants no more, I'm here to tell you that's exactly how it works. No matter what side you stand on, you can find an article that supports your theory. The side I stand on is choice. Use common sense to think this through. If you feel a mask protects you, wear it. Meanwhile, I will be waiting for the critical thinking variant to spread. Hopefully, masks are off by then, and everyone catches that strain. The government has been making your guys' life a living hell. Trust me, I know. Cooper has bound your guys' hands, but he's telling everybody that it's your choice. If you choose choice, you are forcing Cooper's hand. He will have to show his cards, and I'm telling you, he knows he has a losing hand. He knows it. He's going to lose. You guys will lose, and if you guys don't stand up, we lose, our children lose. We're one vote away from changing the tide. One. To make people show their loyalty, quit hide, letting these people hide behind you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next speaker is Justin Bloxham.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Thanks so much for having me. I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I was wondering what I was going to come in and say, right? Maybe I'd put up a fuss about some of these things. You've all heard them before already, right? That it's not the role of the board to provide medical advice for us and our children. It doesn't make sense that our response to all this, when it's 99.9 blah, blah, blah percent survivability, is what it is. That this is way more about politics and power than it is about health. Okay? You've heard all that before. I'm sure you've thought about how much time has been used and wasted over the past 18-plus months of your precious time in these meetings to go over the same stuff, when we have kids that are not testing well, and tests are important to you guys, right? That stuff is not happening. So, you've probably heard all that stuff, fear to come in, put up a fuss, but that doesn't make as much sense. So, instead, what I'd like to do, if you would so kindly work with me on this, I'd like to pray for you all. So, Lord, thank you so much for, for all that you've given us. Thank you for the ability to live in a free country. Thank you for the ability to provide our kids the opportunities that they deserve, should they so choose to strive for it. We pray for each and every board member. We know that they have struggles. We know that this time isn't easy for them either. But we pray that you might help them keep the children in mind. We pray that you will help give them the courage to do what is right, to fight this battle that is waging. We pray that you'll be with them, touch their hearts, and that they are reassured of your love and our love, and that we may do everything that we can to do what is right in our own lives, for ourselves and for others. In these things, we pray in your name, amen. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, board members, we will move to items under number 10 and start with presentations. We will have 10.01, which is the Turf the Ridge Project, and we will have Mr. Steve Sasha, Mayor of the town of Harrisburg, to the podium.
Madam Chair, it's Christian Hall, President of the Division of Public Safety.
Oh, that is great. I apologize, and I'll just let you introduce yourself when you arrive at the podium.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair, board. Yes, I'm Christian Hall, and I'm speaking on behalf of Steve on the Turf the Ridge Project. But tonight, we're seeking approval to kind of move forward with something that was kind of birthed out of kind of the struggles we saw during the COVID stretch just. There weren't a lot of facilities that were at capacity to allow the kids to kind of work out and do the different things, move around. So, in partnership with Steve, what we did is we built out kind of a multi-phase project that would start with... that would start with turfing the track and then the football field at Hickory Ridge High School, building a fitness trail that goes around, building therapeutic equipment for the, for the, those in need to kind of work off on. So it'd be kind of a joint project where we start with the school and then kind of build out. You'll see the phases, if we flip over to page two there, I think you may, man, may not have the documentation, but that's the phase project. So we're looking at phase one, and it's dependent upon the funding. So one of our approaches is to seek federal funding, and part of that will be used to build out the fitness trail, the other part will be used to build out the school facilities. Let me see, phase one, we're including kind of the resurfacing of the fields, the tennis courts, and the building out, and building kind of an escrow to kind of drive that going forward. And as we move on to phase two, we'll build out the innovative playgrounds, the therapeutic trails, et cetera. So you kind of end up with a facility that benefits the kids going forward and then also the community. And the big lift that we get and kind of why we partnered up with the Town of Harrisburg is that with those enhanced facilities, we can then bring large-scale sporting events, football tracks, Special Olympics, senior games, et cetera, which will be an ongoing annual economic boost for the Town of Harrisburg and surrounding. So one of the examples, I've recently gotten pretty heavy into kind of the AAU track and field, and when Greensboro, Greensboro, North Carolina, when they housed the AAU National Olympics, it brought the city 20 million for hosting it for that week because it brought in wrestling, volleyball, track, softball, basketball. And so just the ongoing economic boost that would be available would be kind of an endless stream of annual finance that come in. So I mean, I'll pause there, but today what we're looking for is seeking approval to move forward with just continuing down that funding path. And right now, we're sitting with the non-denial of funds at the federal and state level, waiting on that approval. And if not, then if we don't get the full funds we're looking for, then we'll ultimately go through the grassroots movement of kind of leveraging the Town of Harrisburg to promote fundraises, et cetera.
So just so you know, we actually have your presentation.
Oh.
So they were following you, no problem. And board members have already received this as well, so they've had time to review it.
Awesome.
But for right now, I'll just open it up to comments or questions unless you have something else you'd like to add.
No, it's just perfect. That's even better.
Okay, great. Ms. Carpenter, I'll begin with you.
I think it was pretty much self-explanatory. So basically, they're just asking for permission to raise funds, and if they don't do that, then they go back into the regular cycle. Is that correct?
That is correct. And Mr. Fur is probably going to, as our athletic liaison, speak a little bit more to it as well.
No, I was just going to tell you guys, thank you for doing this. We absolutely positively support you guys with, with just trying to help you along and guide you. I know you are going to do the fundraising and all that, and at some point, it will be turned over to the school system.
Correct.
But thank you and basically good luck.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Walter.
Yes, appreciate that you're coming to us because I've been out to that track. It does, does really need some tender loving care there as well as, there's a lot of opportunities to. For the public's purposes, who is the group? What is the group that's trying to, it's not, it's not a government group? It's a?
No, no, no. It's Mayor Steve Sasha, some parents, myself, the school board.
The community member, community members, right?
Yes, correct.
Is that correct? Community members are trying to raise?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then how much again are you trying to raise?
Our initial, what we're trying, seeking federally is 5 million is our total ask. And so hopefully, if we get around that, that portion.
That'll get you your phase one? That gives you all the phases or just?
Correct. That would give us all the phases. But if not, then we'll take it phase one. We'll do it in prioritized fashion to start with phase one, and as we raise additional funds, we'll move on to the next phase, next phase, and go that route.
I think success will bring more fundraising as well.
Correct, correct. And that's, that's the goal, right? Hopefully, we generate the energy, and then if we don't have the federal funding, naturally, the community will pick up the other piece of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to say thank you so much for everyone that's involved doing this. I live in Harrisburg now and have a vested interest specifically in Hickory Ridge High School also. So I love that you guys are doing this. I love to see the community coming together to benefit these kids. It's so wonderful. And I say, oh, my goodness, that's a lot of money to raise. Trying to do some fundraising of $100 is hard, and you're talking about 5 million, but that's right. Go big or go home, right? All right. Well, thank you so much for doing all of this, and I love it.
Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions. I was able to review prior to, as Holly stated. The only thing I'll say is thank you.
Ms. Adcock.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for everything that you guys are doing, and I know it's going to add so much to the school there, so thank you.
I say go for it, and thank you for doing everything.
So with that being said, I asked Mayor Sasha if he would just come up with a timetable to come back and give us updates, whatever that looks like for you, you know, some type of project schedule. But I think you heard all, that you more than have the blessing of the board. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, board members, we are going to move to items under number 11, 11.01. We'll start with board chair comments. I want to start, number one, we've had a couple of speakers, and I know we've all had a couple of questions raised about the speakers that were here with the Health Alliance, and I think it's extremely important for us to clear up that that, that those representatives the night that we had the report for the Health Alliance was not our experts. We need to clear up that they actually came at the request of the Health Alliance, so we didn't get an opportunity to ask whom, who was coming or what their position is. So I just wanted to make sure that the viewing audience and the general public understand that that was not at the request. We asked for the Health Alliance to always come and update us and give us reports, but we do not request whomever they bring as their experts, if you will. So I just want to make sure that the board doesn't take the hit on that one. I know people got upset. I know that the physicians that were here have places on their COVID team, no matter what their respective careers are. So, but we just felt like that was important to make that clear. Okay? Also, I'd like to take a moment to thank our SROs for being with us tonight. I sometimes fail to do that, and it's very important that we tell you how much we appreciate you being with us during these meetings. Okay? Yes. And then next, we have some acknowledgements for the month of October, and I'm going to begin with the Senate Bill 753, which recognizes October as the Disability History and Awareness Month. And I'm just going to read straight from the statement to make this a little easier. "In 2007, Senate Bill 753 was passed designating the month of October as Disability Awareness and History Month. Since that time, Cabarrus County Schools has ensured that students are provided with education, awareness, and understanding of disability history, people with disabilities, and the disability rights movement through the standard curriculum. Inclusiveness has been a continuing goal of the district throughout the year rather than just during a single month. However, during the month of October, there are multiple activities promoting inclusion and parent involvement. Among these activities are a four-part virtual transition fair for secondary students and their parents, as well as a white cane day celebration bringing awareness and support for our students with visual impairment and blindness. As a board, we recognize the value that a diverse population of student and families brings to the educational community and want to express our dedication to providing an inclusive setting for all of our students as we celebrate Disability Awareness and History Month in October and throughout the year." And next, also, we will recognize that October is also the Bullying Prevention Month and that we have a pledge that on behalf of the board I will be signing tonight. Every October, individuals from across the nation and around the world unite with the powerful message that bullying should never be a part of childhood. National Bullying Prevention Month is a nationwide campaign founded in 2006 by Pacers National Bullying Prevention Center. We, as a Board of Education, show our support in the effort by signing the Champion Against Bullying pledge to support the district efforts and will participate in other activities throughout the month. So I will read. "Cabarrus County Schools is committed to providing every student with a safe, welcoming school environment free from bullying, harassment, and discrimination. As educators, we will work together to create a culture of respect and understanding for all students, staff, and parents. I pledge to be a champion against bullying by choosing kindness, being a good role model for our school and community, being respectful of others and treating them the way I would want my family to be treated, standing up against bullying and cyberbullying when and where it is brought to my attention, providing support to those who are involved in bullying, harassment, or discrimination." And this will be signed by each one of us tonight before you leave, okay? And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kupicki for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin, I just wanted to, again, thank the group of students who came this evening, both the color guard and the performers from J.M. Robinson High School. It's nice to see a start of meetings that way, and it's a constant reminder of why we're here. And it also reminds me, and hopefully others, of the excellence and the talent that exist in this, in this school system. So I really want to thank those, those students for coming out this evening, and we appreciate and really enjoy watching them perform. So I thank them very much. As you noted, it is the National Bullying Prevention Month, and here in Cabarrus County, we're committed to providing every student with a safe and welcoming environment, and we want them to continue to learn and grow in such an environment. If you take a gander at our website over the next month, you'll be able to see some of those activities that we're doing as Madam Chair talked about this evening for the National Bullying Presentation. It's also National Principals Month, and we continue to honor our leaders all month long and remind people of how hard our principals work and to recognize these individuals and the dedication that they have to our students and to thank them for their tireless efforts as we continue to pursue excellence in the education of our students. Couple other events that are occurring this month. It's the Hispanic Heritage Month. It's National School Lunch Week Month. The theme this month is Wild About School Lunch. Today was Indigenous Peoples' Day, a day that we set aside to honor and celebrate Native American peoples and to commemorate their histories and cultures. And then last week, we celebrated and hosted two extremely successful events at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center, our annual college and program choice fairs. And I'd like to thank everyone who attended and to thank especially John Basilese and Alan Sizmansky and their teams for putting together such great events. It was nice to go out there and see all the parents, see all the students, see the community out there, see the board members attend that, and everybody kind of getting a feel for some of those programs and some of the excellence that exists in this school system, and the opportunity to promote that was wonderful. It's officially the program choice season. The applications are available online, and we need you to simply visit the program choice site that's on our district website. And if you do that, you can select the program choice icon, and from the Find It Fast section, you can kind of navigate your way through that, that process. Our applications will be accepted until December 17th. Notification to student families impacted by realignment in 2022 and 2023 were mailed on September 30th. These letters are specific to students who will be asked to change school in the 2022-2023 school year. Additional information and frequently asked questions are located on the district's student alignment webpage, which can be found under the useful links and following the appropriate link to that, that site. We'd also like to say a quick thank you to a couple of community partners for recent donations, the Books-A-Million and their customers for hundreds of book donations for our schools, and Ally Financial for its $10,000 donation to Harris Road Middle School. I also want to remind folks that everyone, that we are approaching the end of the first quarter on October 22nd, and there will be Staff Development Teacher Work Day on October 25th. So parents, please mark your calendars. Then lastly, I want to continue to thank the community as I move about and get acclimated to the area and interact with the teachers, the maintenance staff, the support staff, the nurses, the parents, the community, board members, your Chamber of Commerce, working with the county management, engaging especially with the students, which is, which is the biggest reward and the most fun, I must, must tell you. But also to, to thank the board for their, their commitment to trying to continue to build a team effort to make sure that we're, we're doing everything we can in this, in this very difficult environment to make sure that we're delivering a wonderful educational experience for our students. I know it's challenging for everyone, but I want to thank you for your leadership, and I want to thank those in our community for continuing to support the things that we do here in the Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Mr. White, do you have anything under board attorney comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we will move to 12.02, committee reports, and I will turn it over to board member Denise Adcock. Ms. Adcock, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You go ahead and get started.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to give an update on the BOE Student Intern Program. Our first semester interns, Priya Punakar and Yash Thacker, recently toured our Bus Operations Center and learned about our food services team. We then took a tour of the technology department and got statistical information about the number of Chromebooks we have and how many computer tickets come in daily as well as in person. We met with Mr. John Basilese, Director of Student Services, who discussed many of the resources we have for students, like those in our McKinney-Bento program. Next, I'd like to talk about a school visit I made at A.T. Allen Elementary to see firsthand the unique and creative ways our teachers are instructing our kids in the school system. I was privileged to take a tour of the Grow Lab in our outdoor garden where preschool kids through fifth grade are getting excited about all things plants. One of our amazing teachers, the pioneer developer of the Grow Lab program, Janet Childress, is here tonight to present this transformative learning program to us. To say that she's passionate and energetic about it is really an understatement. To give our audience a visual of her exuberance, after I left the school that day, I was so pumped about the Grow Lab program that I could feel sprigs and new growth springing up around me. Please give a warm welcome to Ms. Janet Childress, Grow Lab and Integrative Garden Facilitator at A.T. Allen Elementary.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you, board, and thank you, Ms. Adcock, for introducing me and our program. So I'm going to give you a quick little overview of what we do. What is Grow Lab? What is our purpose of the integrated garden programs? How we connect our core content? It's not just about growing a plant. And how we engage our students and what are the potential outcomes? All right. Next slide, Mr. White. Thank you. So what is Grow Lab? It's an acronym that stands for Gardeners Reaching Our World. So while this began as a fall and spring unit in the STEM Lab program, it now developed into a after-school garden club, and now it has become my full-time position at A.T. Allen, which I absolutely love. And I serve all of our students now in a five-day rotation for 45 minutes each day. So very excited about that. All right. Our purpose is threefold. So while we teach students where their food comes from and how to make healthy choices, for me, it is so much more. It is also very personal. I want students, when they leave A.T. Allen, to understand that they have it in their power to create change. They can create change by having the knowledge and skills necessary to nourish their personal well-being. They have the power to provide for their own families and for their community, and in doing all of those things, they're making an impact on our global systems and the environment. All right. Core content connections. Like I said, it's not just about putting a seed in the ground and watching it grow. Everything we do is connected to food. It is connected to the garden. We teach science, genetics, living organisms. The weather is a huge part of what we do. Ecosystems. We have literally created our own ecosystem at A.T. Allen. Nutrition and, of course, properties of matter. In our social studies, we give students the opportunity to apply citizenship principles. They learn geography, history, culture, environmental literacy, and economics. Our math is included with numbers and operations, measurement and data, and geometry. And then finally, literacy. Students do a lot of reading in our garden program. Writing, vocabulary, language acquisition, and research is at the foundation of everything we do in literacy for the gardens. All right. There are four levels of student engagement in our program. First of all, it is a school-wide engagement. As you well know, it's very difficult to grow things in the winter. As you well know, it's very difficult to grow things in the wintertime down here in the South, so we grow leafy greens and root vegetables, but the winter temperatures will slow that down just a little bit. So we collaborate at A T Allen with all of the Connect teachers, especially our media facilitator, Ms. Sandy Koo. We do inquiry projects throughout the winter. This started about three years ago when the pandemic started. We were in the middle of our Global Game Changer Inquiry Project, learning how we can impact our global systems. This past year, we still moved forward with the inquiry project, doing a lot of virtual work, learning about bees and how we can change the game for our garden and our world by protecting bees. This year, we're doing a study on birds. At the grade level, we have created a section at the back of our school for every grade level. We call those Bob Beds, back of the building. It's a thematic demonstration area based on mentor texts and tasting activities. Kindergartners work with rainbow salad, and first graders do stone soup. They actually eat their own soup that they've grown at our school. Tops and bottoms for second graders, they grow and eat their sweet potatoes and spring thow slaw. Third graders work with peas and the five Cs, learning all about Dr. George Washington Carver, cotton and its effects on our soil, cabbage, carrots, and compost. Fourth graders learn about the nutrition unit through our smoothie garden, and fifth graders learn how herbs can impact our body systems, and we also celebrate by growing our own salsa. In our small groups, students have the opportunities to practice and live out their citizenship roles, serving on job teams, completing garden maintenance tasks such as composting and weeding. Finally, our students are so invested on an individual level. Can you imagine being at a school during recess and the children are begging, can I please go check my square? Every student at our school owns a square foot of soil by themselves or with a partner, and they are responsible with student choice, growing what happens in that square. So we're taking it from the school level all the way down to the individual level where there's complete student ownership, and that is very powerful. Finally, outcomes. You, as a board, know all too well how data can be used any way you'd like to see it. So I don't have great data to show you, but what I can tell you is that there is data for school garden programs nationwide, many states. This is the norm. It is in every single school. The data is only going to go up. You have increased student engagement when you have garden programs. This in turn leads to healthy choices, which means we've got healthy kids, they're in school every day. This impacts their social, emotional well-being, which we strongly emphasize in our program. They learn the four Cs of collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking. It is all there. Expanded vocabulary at the highest level, and of course, this all translates to higher test scores. So I'm going to end with a quick little video, as long as it will work for us today. This gives you a little history of our garden story and how it was inspired by former principal, Hilda Bats, and through three principals, we have continued to fulfill her vision. We have expanded our gardens since this, and I hope that you enjoy the presentation. Thank you so much. Welcome to the Integrated Gardens and Outdoor Learning Spaces of A T Allen High School in Concord, North Carolina. My name is Janet Childress, Grow Lab and We can always send it to you in an email if it doesn't work for us.
And you know what? We can do that. We can get it out to the board.
I think I'll send it to you in an email.
Absolutely, and I think you want them all to come see it.
Absolutely. This is a formal invitation. You'll receive an email from me to join us at the school gardens and see it for yourself because a picture's worth a thousand words, but being present, it's everything. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Adcock. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other committee reports? Are we good? Okay. So with that, we will move to 12.03. We will have Dr. Kapiki back to the podium for the Cabarrus County Schools COVID-19 Data and Information Update. Are we technology challenged tonight?
Yes.
Are we okay? Mr. Legrand to the rescue. Oh, there we go. Thank you. All you had to do was walk over there, right?
Okay, at the Board's Direction, what you have in front of you this evening is the metric-based guidelines and the guidelines that were created by the task force at the Board's Direction. So what you have in front of you is the green, yellow, orange, and red zones. And what we filled in for you this evening is the percent positive this week as of today was 8.1%, so that would put that in the orange zone. The number of positive cases in the last 14 days in Cabarrus County is 1,023, which would put it in the red zone. The hospital impact by COVID hospitalization in Cabarrus County is 91, which would put it in the red zone. As we talked about this last week, it's going to be up to the board to decide to how they want to interpret this metric, but that's the data and the facts that that that's set before you. When I look at the data over the last four or five weeks, it is pretty clear that the positive rate is is coming down. It was a high of 15.6% back in early September to now it's 8.1%. The cases were at a high of little over 20, little over, looks like 20... Bear with me here, my eyes are filming me. Roughly 2,100, and that number has fluctuated, but it's gone down consistently over the last five weeks to where it stands now. And the hospital cases have fluctuated as well. I can tell you in the district, in the Cabarrus County Schools, that are positive last week were 107, our quarantines were 266. They are both at the the lowest they've been since we started school. We continue to see a descending point trend in in the district. Our amount of positives that were percent positive of the quarantine, so those students that were positive that result that were quarantined that end up returning positive, there were 10 of them this last this last data period, or 4% of those kids quarantined. So that's the information you have in front of you and what the board asks us to to give you, but that metric is in front of you for your interpretation. If you have any questions, I'll happily answer them.
Okay, I will open it up for comments or questions, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions. It looks pretty self-explanatory.
Ms. Blackwell?
So one of the questions that I have, and I guess we've kind of continued to have a little bit of, I don't know, discrepancy in this, is the hospital impact. So these numbers that we get by for Cabarrus County, how many of those are actually Cabarrus County residents that are being hospitalized?
It's a good question. So the case the case count, it's my understanding, according to Cabarrus Health Alliance, that 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 case count represents our county in Cabarrus County.
Right.
The hospitalizations, it's a little different. They're they're they consider hospitalization in Cabarrus County that could be anywhere. My understanding is in the country versus the the 91, which is in the HM Health System in Cabarrus County. I believe I was told they have 457 hospital beds, and of those 91 of them are being occupied by COVID folks. Now, that doesn't just mean in Cabarrus County. It could be Cabarrus County, it could be Union County, it could be Stanley County, it could be people coming in to the the HM Health System. So but right now, there are 91 of the 457 eligible beds being occupied due to COVID.
So it looks like right now there's 34 that are actually Cabarrus County residents, based on the information that we have on the Cabarrus Health Alliance website. So that answers that. So I I think just this is my thoughts on this, but if we're going to use this as a decision for whether or not we're making masks mandatory or optional, we should probably also include how many of those hospitalizations are actually Cabarrus County residents. So that's my thought.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, last week, there were like six or seven measures, and now we're down to three. Is that what the recommendation is?
Well, not down to three. I have I the information I presented to you was the data that I gave to you from the Cabarrus County data site that we get every Monday. So that was the the case count I gave you. These numbers are what you asked us. Last week, you asked us to be more specific and more aligned to the metric. So at the direction of the board, we went back and then looked at the metric, and the board had asked us to just line it up to this metric, which is what we did. If you recall, Director Walter, you know, that was one of the questions we talked about. What's the data points that we wanted to use? And at the direction of the board, we were we were asked to go back to the task force, which we did, talk to the metric team, which I know Sue Burns has reached out to them, and to put the numbers in as they lined up to this and bring this back to the board so that it was more streamlined and more effective, so you didn't have an abundance or or a lot of different data sets all over the place. We tried to streamline this for you. These these tend to be the the, I would say, the three prominent numbers that that continue to come up.
But the recommendation is using these three measures to come up with a mask required or a mask optional?
Yeah.
As I read the chart.
That that would be the working with the board at the direction of the board and what you asked us to do. This is what we came back with. My recommendation is going to be very simple. I think you should stay one more month with maintaining the mask required. And based on this data, I would say that, as I just reported to you, our numbers indicate that our numbers are going down. That's a good sign. They've gone down consistently week after week after week. We're at all-time lows in positives and quarantines. So other data sets that you don't see on here is right now we have 107 positives this this last week in our county school system. We have 266 students that were quarantined. Both of those numbers are the lowest point they've been since the school year started. So there are other sets of data that we have. When I look at the percentage of kids that were quarantined and became positive, that's 4% or 10 students out of the 266 kids. That's an all-time low. So our numbers continue to be going down. There are the data points. My point is what you're doing and what you put in place to keep kids in school is working. I totally get the difference of opinions and people's angst with the mask. I share that, but I do think that right now, as your as your superintendent, I'm saying to you, based on this information, what the board has directed us to put in front of you, I think that we're seeing positive steps keeping our kids in school, positive cases, quarantines going down. I think we stay, of course, one more month. And hopefully, hopefully, the numbers end up in the yellow and the green. And then the metric that you charge us to 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 work with is going to demonstrate a chance where we can go mask optional.
Mr. Walter, is there anything else you would like to add?
I'm trying to understand the chart, that's all. I'm trying, you know, you want something to be clear so the public kind of knows what when can we go mask optional. And right here, we have a chart that has three measures, and if three measures hit yellow, to me, that would be a no-brainer that you're now going to go mask optional.
That's correct. Based on this chart and this metric, we would recommend you stay mask required.
But then you also mentioned some other measures and other things that we need to think about.
I've given you some other information. It shows to to tell you that the data is supporting some of the decisions that the board has made that represents your actions and your leadership has provided a safe place for our students to come back to school, and that and the data is descending, which is what we want. I want to be clear about this. We are going to be operating in a COVID environment for some time. We all know that. My job, and I think our job collectively as a team, and the board sets the table there, is to provide that environment that's safe for students. Right now, I would say to you that you're doing a great job, and you've set up some great parameters to allow us to do that. Your actions are demonstrating that it's working because the numbers are descending, and I think that that's happening because of those actions. I also think this, and I can't prove this out of the data in front of me, I think there are probably things going on across that we don't control that are making the numbers come down. But when you look at it, it's clear as a bell. The last five weeks, the positives have gone from a high of 296 on September 6th. We're at 107. Our quarantines, our quarantines on August 30th were 1,079. We're at 266. When we began four weeks ago, again, at the board's leadership, you have to be commended for this because you tasked us with this, and now we're starting to watch it, and it's another data point that we're using. Four weeks ago, we started looking at who was becoming positive out of quarantines. It was 62 students, or 13% of those students, and now it's down to 10 students, or 4%. So those other data points are descending, and it's the actions and some of the leadership that you've demonstrated and tasked us with as your leadership team to to watch this data. And I think this metric, again, the board put a task force together of of community members that are involved in this. I was not here when this was put in place, and I was not here when when they did this really good work, but I will say to you, I I like this. It gives us a metric to look at, as you had asked last week. So what are what are those things we're going to look at? Well, here's the three things that you asked us to to give. So there are the three in front of you. The other stuff I'm talking to you a little offsite is not in front of you, but those data points are descending. So I think we're I think we're at a good point, and you know, again, kids are in school. And what we have to keep in the back of our minds at all time is, you know, there's teachers, there's bus drivers, there's cafeteria workers, there's maintenance workers, support staff. There's so many people that keep the operational functions of the of this district going that in your actions and the leadership that we've shown and the board's support and the board's leadership have dictated a safe place for our kids to be in school, working around COVID.
It also shows that 96% of kids are being quarantined when they probably don't need to be. But anyway, I understand this, and I appreciate you keep making it clear so we can understand.
And I would say to you, too, the quarantine is quarantine is going to be, again, you know, I'm not going to stand here and say that everything we're doing is perfect, that everything we're doing is working, and that there aren't flaws in the system, because there are. And we'd all be sitting here lying if we didn't say that, you know, there are flaws in the system. We all know kids, some kids are being quarantined that probably don't need to be, you know, which is why we went into the test and state, what we talked a little bit about last week. We did have a meeting. There are there are some things we need to consider when we look at that program. I think it's a good program, but I think there there's still some information that we need to look into before I bring that back to the board and say, hey, let's let's invest in this. So I think if we're just very clear about at least this metric that the board tasks us to put in place, it's a good starting point, and if the numbers continue to descend, it's showing that what we're doing is working. And it's going, our goal is to get to a mask optional. Our goal is to get to no mask, right, at some point? So hopefully, some of these steps that you put in place will continue to help us achieve that goal.
So, Rob, is there anything else? This is what we started with, but is there anything else that you see that you would like to have another indicator for the metrics? I know you said we never can.
Again, my my goal is to keep kids in school, and my goal is to get rid of it, to make it mask optional as soon as it's reasonably possible to do so, and something that's objective. So you have an objective thing here, but you have a group of people that came together, they agreed on these numbers, they've presented it to us. If that turns to yellow, then I think it makes it very clear. I'm happy it was just three measures, if that's all it needs. That's fine.
Mr. Farf?
Well, you know, when I look at this metric, just like Ms. Blackwell said, if you look at the hospitalizations for Cabarrus County people, then that puts us in the in the yellow range that that mask optional, if we use that 31 or 34, whatever it was. So that shows me two out of three metrics are mask optional. And, you know, we can sit here and argue all night whether the mask works or don't. We don't know the exact answers to that, but I don't think regardless of what I vote, I mean, I don't think it reflects poor leadership whether I vote mask optional or mask if I make you wear a mask. So I just want to be clear that regardless of what this metric says, I'm always going to vote mask optional.
Ms. Carpenter?
You know, I have to agree to disagree with you guys. You say, well, it's 34 people of Cabarrus County people. Well, I'm sorry, there's 91 people in the hospital. Our people that are our nurses, our doctors are having to take care of 91 people in the hospital. I don't care if they're Cabarrus County people or if they're aliens from outer space. There are 91 people in the hospital. It doesn't matter if they're Cabarrus County citizens or if they're anybody. There are 91 people in the hu- There are 91 people in the hospital. And our nurses and our doctors having to take care of them. It's 91 people that are in the hospital. Now, it doesn't matter if they're Cabarrus County citizens, they're in the hospital. And our people are having to take care of them. So it doesn't matter. And so, and one of the things, there was just an article in yesterday's paper, and it stated, it was in, in The Observer, and it stated, in, in the headline was, "Mask Helps Slow Down COVID." And it, and it stated, then this was by the health director out of Charlotte Mecklenburg, and she stated that schools not requiring masks are 3.5 times more likely to have more COVID outbreaks than those not requiring masks, based on data from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. And this article stated, and it talked about it, the three systems that had not, and it was data that had been collected, and it showed that the mask did help. And the article went on and it gave numbers and everything. And it showed that the mask, masking did help. But talking about the 91, those people are there. But one of the things that I think it is very important that we keep all three factors, not just one. And I think that's very important, and I thought that we all had discussed that we need to have the, you know, that it's very important to have the health department make that recommendation also. And I think that's very important that we do that. And so I, I think that that's important to have that be considered when we, we do that. And so I, I appreciate all that. And two, on the quarantine, I think that that needs to be clarified because one of our speakers tonight had, had questioned that. So on the quarantine, and again, I want that clarification. If the individuals are wearing the mask, both parties wearing the mask and are not vaccinated, which a lot of times our children are not vaccinated, do they have to quarantine?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Baske, but it's my understanding if both are masked and that they do not need to quarantine.
Ms. Carpenter, if both parties are masked.
Properly.
Properly masked, then they will not need to quarantine if both parties are properly masked, whether they're students and with the most recent update to the toolkit.
I knew there was an update. That's why I wanted to clarify this.
So, so if everybody is properly masked, then they do not have to, they do not have to quarantine. And that goes for K-12. Pre-K has a different set of standards, but K-12, all individuals that are properly masked, do not need to quarantine if everybody's properly masked.
God, that just took effect this past, was that just this week or has that been all along?
So the individuals just came into effect last, this last week.
That's what I was thinking. So we've not had a chance for this, that one just to come into effect.
Well, so for student, I'm sorry.
So Ms. Baske, let me interrupt for just a moment, because if you will not talk over it, it's hard. It's okay. But will you just, for the viewing audience, just repeat exactly what you just said?
Yes, ma'am. So for student to, student to student, we've had that for some time now. But for adult to student and adult to adult transmission, the mask exemption exists now for adults to, adults and adult to student for K-12, effective last week. So I do think that will impact the number some.
I think that's probably going to need a little bit more clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the reasoning that I, I don't think the people out there are going to understand.
Sure.
Student to.
Okay.
Adult and adult to adult. We, we haven't had that conversation.
Sure. Okay, so can I give you an example?
Absolutely.
All right. So suppose you have a, a teacher in a, in a kindergarten classroom where mask, you know, where proper masking is extraordinarily difficult and that there's some degree of handholding that goes on and a lot of proximity. Formerly, that teacher, if that teacher were positive, even, even with the kids properly masking, since an adult to child transmission, those children that would have been within six feet for 15 minutes or more would have been needed to be quarantined. That no longer exists under the new update to the toolkit. That's one example. Another example would be adult to adult, where adults don't need to quarantine if they're both properly masked, where formerly you would have to quarantine even if one person, even if both parties were masked, if, if both were not, if one of them were positive. Does that make it any more clear?
Yeah, that actually makes much more sense. So I think what the problem is that we haven't recognized yet is the lunches where they're not masking. You know, we spoke to that quite a bit at the last meeting, and people understood that those were probably our troubled areas, you know. If you would like to speak to that again.
Sure. So, so for lunches, that, one of the challenges is that students need to, obviously, students need to eat, and you need to eat when you're eating, you're going to be, you're not going to be wearing your mask properly, and you're going to be within, within six feet of other students for a period of 15 minutes or more typically. And so if I were positive and Dr. Kapiki were eating lunch next to me, and we were eating lunch for, you know, say 20 minutes, then, then obviously he would be a close contact to me. Does that make sense?
It does. The question is, if we've got 266 in quarantine and only 10 were positive, what is going on there?
So may I clarify that for just a moment? And this, you know, one thing to remember is the quarantines include the positive children themselves, right? So when you hear that there's only 10 that were, that, that tested positive, you have to also remember that prior to that, you had 107 that were already, that were already positive. Does this make sense? So of your 266, 107 of them are positive. So those, so 10 kids moved from being close contacts to being among those, those 107 positives. I'm hoping that that's making some sense. So it's still a small percentage, 10 out of a.
It's different from what we were told before, or what we understood before. I don't think we were told that that positive were included in either.
Okay. So I, I don't think it's different than what we represented before. I think that sometimes it's very hard when we're, when we're talking about numbers and not looking at the same charts at the same time. It's sometimes hard to always connect on what we're, what we're saying and having alignment of what we're saying. But what I can tell you assuredly is that the quarantines definitely include the positive students, right? So it definitely includes that. So Mr. Walter, you know, and you and I have known each other a long time, have a lot of respect for the work that you do, and what I'm saying right now is not confrontational at all, but when you said a moment ago that, that like only 4% of the students, you know, that 96% of students shouldn't be quarantined, it leaves out the fact that 107 of them are positive.
Right. And I wasn't, I wasn't aware that 107 were. So you're saying the 55 that you count as positive this week, they will be part of your quarantine next week? Is that what you're saying?
Well, right now you have 107 positives this week. There's 266 cases that are quarantined. Of the 266, 107 of them are the kids that were identified as positives.
I'm sorry.
159 other students that, that are still quarantined because of that, which would represent a different percentage. Of that, 10 of them have become positive, which represents the 4% number.
Right.
And that's not how I looked at it before, but okay, thank you.
The number still continues to go down, is what I'm saying. You were at a high of 13% three weeks, you are at 4% now. You were at a high of 62 cases, you're, you're at a low of 10, 10 kids right now.
I'm hoping that's made it more clear.
And that, that's just, I don't mean to, that's just one data point. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. My intention to here, coming up here is to make this more clear, and I'm hoping that I haven't made more muddies somehow, right?
We all go there, so it's okay. Thank you. That, that does help. Ms. Adcock, I'm sorry, Ms. Carpenter, do you have something else?
Sure. And, and one thing I think is, is good maybe is with the superintendent's recommendation to wait one month is, two, I think we're getting nearer for the vaccination for the younger. I, I know that, I've been watching that, and I think everybody has. I think we're getting closer and closer for the vaccination for the younger children. And I, I think that would be good, and that's all I have to say. Okay? Ms. Adcock?
Thank you. I do want to thank everyone that is putting these numbers together and giving those to us and updating them. I know that takes a lot of work, and I'm thankful for that, and that the numbers are going down. One thing that I would like to say is, I do agree with Ms. Blackwell and Mr. Fur that we need to use the Cabarrus County numbers for hospitalizations because we're looking at people that live in Cabarrus County, and those numbers need to represent just our county. And I just want to be on the record for saying that. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure as far as, you know, we, we modified this metric chart. Number one, I want to clarify because I know Ms. Carpenter spoke to a little bit about the Health Alliance updates. So when the Health Alliance comes to do our updates, and you're right, they're important. We always want to know what the picture of Cabarrus County looks like. Dr. Kapiki and I are usually on a local leader's call Monday mornings where they, you know, give us that status anyway, and they go through the slides of what Cabarrus County looks like. So that information is sent out to y'all. I knew that was important. Two separate, two separate situations. I think it was confusing with one of our speakers who spoke to that, and it, it kind of got a little bit convoluted. The Cabarrus County with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, when they come to give us an update, that is the entity that we normally look to for status of Cabarrus County. Our task force is what we have created within our school system, and thank you for participating on that last call. That does comprise of the Health Alliance, the school system, community members, parents. So there are parents on that. I think that may have been a little bit confusing, and that needs to be clarified. Our task force that has about, I don't know, 34 people on it, we do have parent representation. You know, we have a good representation of, across our community for that, for that task force. The numbers here, you know, if there's anything else, because we have condensed, and that's what we asked Dr. Kapiki and the staff to do, I think the indicators are good and it gives us exactly what we need. I do agree, and I will agree to disagree with you as well, I think it's very important that we do identify what our Cabarrus County residents are in the hospital. Not that we don't acknowledge how many are in the hospital, because we do, but I think it's important that we do acknowledge what are our Cabarrus County residents, because those are the people who are turned back to their respective counties. So let's look at this. So if we, you know, just looking at lining it up with the 8.1, we are 0.1 away from being in the yellow with the percent positive. And we get new numbers on Wednesday. That's exactly right. So this Wednesday, we will get an update because these reports are always behind. I think I've told you all that, but sometimes I think we forget. These reports are always about 10 to 14 days behind. So that 8.1 on Wednesday morning should change, and we've seen such a great decline. You know, we're hoping that that will continue that trend. Then the number of positives, even though that has went up, that's one of our indicators, and that, that's the only one that has, that has made that jump. Most of all of our indicators have declined. The hospital impact, should we be using our Cabarrus County? We only use our Cabarrus County schools information. You know, we're not pulling from the other counties in any of this information when we, when we look at this. So if we're using just Cabarrus County, that also would have placed that in the yellow zone. So then that means that two out of our three indicators would have placed us in the yellow zone. So I just want you to think about that before we vote, which is on the agenda tonight. Should, if we would like to vote tonight, you know, the governor has mandated that we vote once a month. We can vote tonight to take the action effective immediately. We could make it effective later on in the week or Monday after we receive the updates on Wednesday. Or we can have a special call meeting to get a new update later on, which is whatever the board's pleasure would be. But I need some direction before we get to the motion, and I'm going to continue through the agenda, but I want us to keep in mind, if there's any other indicators, this is what the staff needs direction on. You know, we talked about, if, if there's something else that you said, we, we went down from six to three. If there's another one of those indicators that, that is important to you, this is the time to tell us so that we can modify this for the next meeting. Okay? So with that being said, unless you have something else, I think we've covered all unless anyone else has a comment or a question.
Well, I've given my recommendation. I appreciate the board's input and it's been a good discussion. And again, you know, these are the numbers that were given, so I mean, this is what we're reporting out to you as we're giving these numbers. So I thank you.
And my other question, so if you changed the hospital impact to just Cabarrus County residents, does that change the numbers, the, the bands here?
It does, because it would have placed 34 in the yellow zone.
Right.
But that's assuming that 51 is the same, would still be a red and not something less than that.
Your indicator, I'm sorry.
And our recommendation would be that, that the indicators are all in the yellow and green, that it's not split. And then again, we understand it's the board's, it's the board's decision made, but we would recommend that all indicators are in yellow or green before you went mask optional.
Can I ask a question? I read this as hospital impact. It doesn't matter where the folks came from. It matters how the staff at the hospital are impacted by the amount of people that are in the hospital. Do I read that wrong somewhere? I'm right. Okay. I thought, I thought I was right. So it doesn't matter that 35 of those are Cabarrus residents and they're coming back into Cabarrus. It matters the impact, and this was the same point that the state health director made to the state board the other day. The impact looks at, how does this impact the people that are working in our county hospital, trying to take care of patients that come in for normal stuff? And they can't do that because they've got patients for COVID. Is that, do I understand that correctly? Okay, thank you.
Yes. My understanding is, my understanding is you have 91 cases of COVID in the Atrium Health System right now. That could be from any county, any, our county or any surrounding county. And they occupy about roughly 20% of the beds that Cabarrus County has.
I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
So I just want to make a statement to that as well, Ms. Sandich. So you're right, on one side of that, it is, but the other side of that is that because we are a hub, they can deny patients at some point in time if they get overloaded, if you will. Those outside residents, they can, they can deny that. I don't know their protocol for doing that. They've only done it once, to my knowledge.
If somebody walked in the emergency room, they can get, they can deny them services?
Well, they, these are usually transferred in from the, and I, I'm not even going to get into the.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying that we are being a hub, that it, to me, is important to know what our Cabarrus County residents are, because at some point in time, if we get an overload in the hospital, they're not going to take outsides. They're, they're going to push, push them back to their respective hospitals. So that number would be important to me. I would like to know if they chose to do that at some point in time, and they have, what does that look like? I'm not saying we don't look at that overall impact that's there, because that's what we've been doing, but I do want to know what the Cabarrus County is. I think it's very important.
So are we saying instead of the 91, put like 34 Cabarrus and then 91 total?
That's what we've been doing. That's what we've been doing.
Okay. That's different. I thought we were talking about just looking at the 34.
No, I'm saying we have.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing you all correctly.
Is that all?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Fur?
Yes. I was just going to ask, probably a dumb question, but about the hospital impact, what if every, like, what if we were down to 4% and, and all the positive cases were, everything was in the yellow except the hospital impact, and it was above because of people from other counties? We still going to work to not be mask optional? I mean, that, that doesn't really make sense to me, the hospital impact, when it could be, it could be five people from Cabarrus County and 90, and it could show 90 here, and we're going to go by that metric? I don't, you know, see what that makes.
What if we just drop that metric and just use two?
I mean, we can. It's the board's pleasure. I mean, we can. It's the board's pleasure. I'm just, I'm not arguing that we don't look at it at all, right? But I do think it is important because the Cabarrus County residents are the ones that we come in contact with, and our students come in contact with. I don't know that they'll be in contact with people that are hospitalized here from Stanley or Rowan or have any type of exposure. But I'm not saying we don't look at the overall impact. Oh, I like how we've always done it. We've had the overall impact and then what the Cabarrus County is. And unless you change that, that we'll keep that. Now, if it's the pleasure of the board.
I'm good.
Everyone? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so now we will move to items under number 13, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the October 4th, 2021 consent agenda be approved as presented? I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we will move to our action agenda, items under number 1401. This is the return to school COVID safety guidelines. And board members, this is where we will continue the discussion, and then we can decide if we're going to actually take action on this vote tonight. So I'm going to begin with Ms. Carpenter. If you have comments or questions, or if there's anything else that we need to discuss before we actually take the vote. Or we can decide what I laid out before. We can vote on it tonight, or we can vote on it to delay the implementation of it till later on after the Wednesday numbers. Okay. Will you key up, please, and just make that statement so for the record?
I'm ready to take the recommendation of our superintendent at this time.
Okay, Mr. Fur?
Yes, I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Walter?
We have a recommendation from the task force. I think we either accept it or we don't.
Ms. Blackwell?
I'm okay to vote.
Ms. Sandage?
I'm okay to vote. Can I ask a clarifying question, Dr. Kopicki?
Sure.
So the information in the metrics that we just saw is the recommendation from the task force for all three of those metrics to be met to determine what we are doing as far as mask or mask optional.
So that was a conversation that was had. I wouldn't say.
I'm sorry, hold on. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Go ahead.
I heard Mr. Fur. I thought he was maybe saying something to me. Go ahead.
So our recommendation to you as a board, based on some discussion, I wouldn't say that that was a unanimous discussion because last week, a unanimous decision, because last week when we talked, the board had asked us to go back and kind of streamline the information, the data, right? And we talked about the task force, and we talked about the metric that the task force had developed. So we went back and put together what we saw this evening. Our recommendation, my recommendation to you would be to use all three of those criteria to make a decision, that if all three were in red, you stay masked. If they're all in orange, you stay masked. If you have one in yellow, two in red, I think you need all three indicators to be in either a yellow or a green to be mask optional. That would be the recommendation that I would make to the board.
Okay.
Ms. Sandage, anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Adcock?
Uh, yes, I just want to make a clarifying question. Is there, I guess at this point in time, I'm a little bit confused. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to vote to wait until we are at those three thresholds?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
The metrics. So are we right now going to vote for the three thresholds and the metrics to be met? If it's at a later date next week for them just to be implemented at time to go to mask optional?
Well, I mean, I guess that could be one way that we do it.
So a question for Jay.
Okay, well, I say let's go ahead and vote tonight.
Right now, there is no motion before the board. So there needs to be a motion before the board, before anything, a motion and second. I heard Mrs. Carpenter made a statement.
I made a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. That was my motion.
So we have a motion, and then you need to have a second.
I can second that.
Okay, I have a motion. Ms. Carpenter, will you restate your motion, please?
My motion was to accept the superintendent's recommendation, which was to continue the mask mandate in place. We have received recommendations.
Okay, and Ms.?
For one month.
Okay, and Ms. Sandage, you seconded that? Correct? Correct, okay. So I'm going to open it back up for discussion regarding the motion. Okay, the motion's on the floor. It has been properly seconded. So Ms. Adcock, I need clarification on what you're actually saying in reference to Ms. Carpenter's motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so I'm just trying to clarify that if we vote tonight for optional mask, that that's because it has met three of the metrics. If it even happens next week, I know we talked earlier about if we voted now, that it could go in effect when those numbers, those three numbers move into play.
Okay, so the, just for clarification, and I'm hoping that you can hear good, that there is a motion on the floor by Ms. Carpenter, seconded by Ms. Sandage, to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to continue the mask mandate for one month. So that motion is already on the floor. I've opened it up for discussion. Unless you want to substitute that, this is the discussion.
Okay, well, I'll just keep my comments then.
Okay, all right. So hearing that, yeah, we're going to vote. So I have a motion to accept the recommendation by the superintendent to continue the mask mandate for one month. It was seconded by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye. Would you like addition? Yes, absolutely. I've asked you.
Okay, we didn't mention the task force. So are you throwing out the task force recommendation?
I thought that was what the task force had recommended.
Is it the task force, or?
That's why I asked the question.
Because we had two things we had.
Well, he's using the task force. This is what they actually created.
That's what they told us to do.
Okay, task force didn't say another month. Task force says when the measurement hits that number, we change. It didn't say another month.
This is what they recommended.
Let, no, that's not true. That's the superintendent's recommendation. Not for the, Mr. Walters is talking about the timeframe, not what they recommended, but for the length of time. So let him clarify.
So I'll separate the two out. So my recommendation would be to stay in masks for one more month and have the board revisit it again in one month. I think the metrics all across the board, whatever data I look at, we see positive signs that what we're doing is working, period. So I would recommend that we stay in the masking mandate for one more month and then revisit again in November. The second piece to this is, a week ago, we brought up the task force metric, and you had asked me, we were talking about different data points. And the board gave a directive that we should streamline the data into one spot, and that it would be wise to use the task force information to do that, which is what you saw this evening. What we gave you was, based on the task force metric, that's the metric they created, we plugged the numbers in as to where they were. So you see the 8.1%, the 1,023 cases, and the 91 hospitalizations, which you had a great discussion about. So that's the information that you're using. When I look at that information, what I'm saying, if you, my recommendation is stay masked. If you're asking me, when I look at the metric, to me, the metric is saying, stay masked. If you want to use that metric as you direct us to go back and look at, I'm fine with that. Clear?
It is. I think what Mr. Walters is trying to say is that the month is what you had the issue with.
I would prefer to adopt the metric. So when the data points get to the yellow, we automatically go to mask optional, not having to wait another month. Or call a special meeting or whatever. But when the things, when metrics go to yellow, I think we need to go to mask optional.
And I think the board, we left no end on this. The board kind of left, that would be a board decision. The board kind of said last week that they would make that decision, so.
So the motion on the floor, though, is to stay masked for one more month. That's the motion on the floor. It is not anything different from that. It is not involving anything different from masking one more month. So let's vote on that. If that motion fails, then we can entertain another motion. Okay?
It'll be less than, excuse me, it'll be less than a month. We'll be meeting in November, so it'll be less than a month when we meet, so.
I think the issue is, and one that I want to speak to as well, is we are so close, and Wednesday may change this totally and completely. 8.1 may become the less than eight, which is one of those.
I'll be perfectly honest with you. I'm not going, in reading everything I read, and it was stated in this article, most people say leave mask mandated in place until you reach a percentage of about 5%. So I'm not going to be happy until I'm at the top percent.
That's okay. That's your prerogative. You understand that. So we're going to take a vote. Ms. Sandage? Do you have a comment?
There's six counties out of our 100 counties that are mask optional.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor and a second by Ms. Sandage. All this in favor, say aye. And actually, I want a raise of the hands, okay? All in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Adcock, I'm going to need to know what yours is by verbal.
No.
Thank you. That motion fails. Now I will entertain another motion. Is there someone else that has a different motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the task force recommendation. And if metrics change to any one of those categories, that we automatically change to that mask optional. Does that make sense?
I want clarification.
Okay.
We have three metrics. We'll get a report on those every week. And if you have three that are in the yellow, then we're mask optional. If you have three that's in the orange, we're still mask required. I mean, it seems pretty simple. It can be put on the website. Anyone can see it.
So I guess the thought is we all are going to have to agree with Mr. Walters, that that's what you're saying. Are you wanting all three indicators? Are we wanting the two out of the three? The number of hospitalizations is the only one that actually went up. Everything has went down. The board has never decided. We haven't decided if we are going to take all three, or if we're going to do two of three. That's a discussion we have not had as well. That's what Ms. Adcock was asking. So I think we have to make that determination first, and if we're going to put a motion on the floor that all three have to be met.
Well, the recommendation was all three, but I'm open to whatever the board has a majority of.
Can I ask a question? Sue, you worked on the metrics team? So the metrics that you sent to us, can you tell us if that was agreed upon by the task force as a whole, or by just the metrics team?
I thought I'd get out of this. No. Okay, so, no, it's fine. So the metric team did meet. We came up with the first metric chart. We went, like Dr. Kopicki said, we went back and streamlined that. The full task force did review the metric chart before we brought it to you last week, and there were no objections from anyone on that team. It was also sent to them prior to us meeting virtually. Then I took the metric chart that had been revised and sent that back out to the metric team so that they would all see exactly what it was going to look like, because it didn't look exactly like what we had presented last week. And I got nobody, no one sent me information that said they did not agree with the all three having to be in yellow or orange. So I can tell you that it is the metric team's recommendation that all three be met. And I, you know, the task force did meet and review it. They reviewed it through email, and then we met, and there were no objections.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell, anything else?
I mean, I'm going to continue to vote for mask optional regardless as to what we talk about tonight. So it's whatever you guys want to do, but I will always vote for mask optional.
Mr. Fur?
Yes, I'm the same as Ms. Blackwell. And, you know, not trying to be stubborn or pigheaded, which I am, but, you know, I'm out and about a lot. I go to a lot of events. I've been to soccer games. I've been to traveling baseball tournaments. I've been to high school football games on Friday night, and thank goodness the stands are full. The stadiums are full of kids. And they're not six feet. They're not two feet. Some of them are, you know, they're right spitting on each other, right in each other's face. And I witnessed that, and it's like, basically, on Friday nights, everything's normal. But Monday through Friday, I'm gonna stick a mask on a kid? I just think that's totally wrong. And I'll, I just don't understand. I think we're doing injustice to our children.
Ms. Carpenter, you're keyed up. Did you have something?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Adcock, now would you like to restate your comment?
Uh, I think what I was talking about is the three metrics meeting the three metrics, just like Mr. Walters said.
So are you saying that you agree using all three metrics, I mean, all three indicators on the metrics?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Did we get a second? Is that a second?
So Jay, I think I have a question. I want to make sure that we can, if we just say as soon as they're all three met, so I guess I need to make sure that everybody's okay with that.
You can still do it as all three met. However, every month, you still can, you have to continue to vote, even though for the next, till the next business meeting, you will follow whatever the guidance of this, whatever this body says tonight. And then next business meeting, you will still see it again. Next business meeting, you still have to vote whether or not to keep mask optional, go mask mandatory, or no masks at all, whatever the decision board is. But you still have to vote it every month.
And that's where I was going. But I guess my question is, so as soon as that goes, all three indicators are within that yellow, and I'm assuming that we're all going yellow, correct? Yellow?
You're saying we wouldn't have to vote then?
No, no, you still have to vote every month. So what I understand from Mr. Walters' motion is that the motion is to follow the task force recommendation, and I believe there was with all three indicators being yellow or better, yellow or green. If that were to pass tonight, you would still be back here in November and make a decision about what to do about masks. Every month, and that's by the legislature, every month, you must vote on masks.
But it's, the logistics of the vote is what I'm trying to make sure we're correct on. So tonight, if we gave Dr. Kopicki the authority to, as soon as that becomes, all three indicators are in the yellow, he immediately would put out that mask becomes optional?
If that is what the vote, if that is what the vote is tonight, yes.
Okay.
Now, so that means, say, all three indicator, if that's the task force, the indicators' task force are all three yellow or green tomorrow, then by your vote tonight, that guidance would be mask optional. If it is the day before the next business meeting, that it goes all three yellow or green, it would be just for that day, and then you'd vote again in November. You're always going to vote.
Right. I have the 30 days. I'm just trying to figure out how much authority we pass to him with timeframe-wise, as far as if it becomes all three Wednesday after they update the numbers. Is it automatically on Wednesday, or does it start the effective day?
The way the vote is tonight, the way the vote would be tonight, yes.
Okay, all right. As long as we're legal on that, I just want to make sure. Okay, so Mr. Walters has a motion on the floor. Did someone second it?
Denise did it.
Denise, okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Walter and a second by Ms. Adcock. I'm going to ask for, since she, since you motioned it and she seconded it, I'm going to ask for verbals, yes or no's. So Ms. Sandage?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
I'm voting yes, because if this will make us get rid of masks sooner rather than next month, I'm good with that.
Mr. Fur?
Nope.
Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Okay, I have to think about that. So I have, Ms. Sandage?
Can I ask for clarity?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter, what's your no for?
You're just not wanting to go mask optional, period, right?
She's wanting to be a five.
5% was where I was going to be in the way you're talking. That may not be the case.
But you're, so you're rejecting the task force recommendation of the group of professors? The Health Alliance first round?
Hang on, hang on. We've got to hit.
I'm just trying to clarify.
That's not taking the task, just, no. That's not taking the task force, taking the task force recommendation. Excuse me. Taking the task force recommendation is what I just did. You just did not do that, so no.
Okay, so I have Ms. Sandage a yes, correct? And Ms. Blackwell a yes. Rob, you are a yes. Denise is a yes. Carolyn, you are a no. Yes, you and Karen, right. But I'm going to be a no as well, and I'm just going to state my reason. And I've stated it from day one. And I've stated it from day one, I have an issue with some of those indicators only because of those numbers and how they're done within Cabarrus County, and not so much as selected to Cabarrus County schools, and that is just a personal preference to me. So it is going to carry 4-3, with Mr. Furr, myself, and Ms. Carpenter as a no, and Mr. Walter, Ms. Blackwell, Ms. Sandage, and Ms. Adcock as a yes. Karina, do you have that?
I have 3, Mr. Furr, Carpenter, and Ms. Sandage.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so.
Okay, good. Okay, let's move on to 14.02, approval of the E-Rate purchase requisition. We will have Mr. Dane Hughes to the podium.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to ask for your approval to purchase our replacement cycle switches. These were bid using the E-Rate process, and ANC won the bid with a bid of $1,588,938.38, E-Rate funds 60% of that, which is $603,339.3, making our local portion $423,559.35. So that's what our purchase rec would be for. The great thing about it is BPI will reimburse us for that money, so, but since it is over $250,000, I do require your approval. And the only reason we're bringing this to you in such a rush state and in what we normally do, some of the items on this list have a 20-week lag time. So if we order them today, they hope to be here in February. So we want to go ahead and get these things moving, if at all possible, and that's why we ask for your approval tonight. What questions do you have?
Okay, board members, comments or questions? And I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any, thanks.
Ms. Blackwell?
None, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Why didn't you bring it to us last week?
We only got our funding commitment letter recently, so we didn't have that in place.
So the funding commitment just came in this week?
I believe it came in on late Thursday or Friday of last week, and we asked to get on the agenda for last week, and we couldn't get on. We were too late.
But you did request to be on the agenda? I mean, it's just, I would like to promote it, to let the public know about it prior to us voting on it, if at all possible, but I understand your reasoning, so. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we couldn't get on the agenda for last week.
Thank you.
But not because the board chair denied it, right?
I don't know the reason why.
No, it was not.
I wanted to make sure that was clear. We don't give you a hard time about that. We have to have all the information, for sure. All right, Mr. Furr?
Ms. Adcock, anything?
No questions.
Okay, board members, may I have a motion to approve the request for the E-Rate purchase requisition? Send me. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You are approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you too, thanks. All right, board members, I need a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter and a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and thank you for being with us.